All right, it is 5:30 and I'm going to call this Steenville City Council meeting to order. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Ricky Thurman is going to lead us in there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of honor and honor indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state of honor, one indivisible.
Thank you, sir. All right, and for the invocation tonight, we've got Mr. Jared Brown here to lead us.
Would you bow with me, please? Father, thank you. Thank you for the rains. Thank you for tonight, Lord. Thank you that there's exponential growth upon our lands. Thank you that there's exponential growth in our city, Lord. We just ask you tonight for wisdom and how to manage all of that. Thank you that we live in one of the freest cities in all of the state. Lord, we live in one of the freest states in all of the nation, and we definitely live in one of the freest nations in all of the world. And we have you to thank for all of that. So, Father, we ask for wisdom. Your word says if we ask you for wisdom, you will grant it to us abundantly. So, Lord, we ask you tonight for wisdom upon each council member here. May they be guided by your will, your desire for Steenville, Texas. You have a vision as how this place should look, what your citizens should be engaged in, the commerce, the education, the freedom of the city, Lord. We yield it over to you and we thank you. We praise you for it. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Always one of the best ways to start these meetings, so we appreciate you all continuing to come and blessing us. All right, first up, we're going to have citizens discussion, citizens general discussion, and we have one person here to... Never mind. We don't have anybody for that one, sorry. Our next one is citizens budget request, and we do have one for that. Mr. Bob Self, go ahead and take the podium and you've got three minutes.
Okay, I put down that I represented a group. That's for the three-minute limit, I suppose, but I'll abide by that anyway. I'm here individually representing the group. Honorable Mayor and council members, good evening. My name is Bob Self. I currently live in Hamilton County, but I consider Steenville to be my hometown. I attended school here, including Torleton, and after serving eight years in the Air Force, I came home to continue the family business, which was Self's boot shop located just right over there, after my father's death in 1980. Then I began working as a city employee in 1991 and retired in 2009. The retirement plan with the Texas Municipal Retirement System, TMRS, is a significant benefit to employees. It can be a major consideration in attracting and retaining quality employees, especially in the public safety areas where stiff competition with other cities exist. Recent budgets have increased salaries in these areas to address this issue, but several surrounding cities have a better benefit in the form of a repeating cost of living allowance known as a COLA, generally fifty to seventy percent of the change in the Consumer Price Index. For a number of years after retirement, I observed that the small annual increase of the cost of living adjustment in the annuity, which was typically one to three percent, did not really keep pace with the increase in the cost of living, but it helped a little. Then, without warning, the 2017 council quietly eliminated the annual COLA from the retirement plan. While I acknowledge that it was the right of the council to do so according to the rules, it was a slap in the face to the approximately 110 retirees and many more future retirees to do so without advance notice and discussion. Being unaware of the council's actions, in January 2018, I noticed the lack of an increase, but thought it was because of the CPI calculation that measures inflation. I had seen this happen with social security adjustments. In 2019, there was no adjustment, and the same in 2020. That's when I finally learned that there was no longer any possibility of an increase because of the action taken in 2017. Last spring, several of us decided to raise our concern to the staff and council about this issue. As you know, living expenses continue to increase, especially with the current economic situation. Since the day I retired, I have tracked every penny I spend, so I can personally attest to the increased costs. We are now four years behind the curve. Our effort last year succeeded only in shedding light on the situation. There was no change in the policy. However, several council members, Councilman Pendleton, Nix, Thurman, and Huckabee encouraged us to come back again, quote, "next year." Well, this is next year. When I asked Cindy Stafford, former city secretary, all of you know her, two months ago about whether we should continue our efforts to convince the council, her response was, "Never give in, never give up." Cindy couldn't be here tonight because she's in Iowa, celebrating her sister's birthday. On behalf of all current and future retirees who give their time and effort for the benefit of the citizens, I'm urging the council to reinstate a cost of living adjustment in this year's budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Self. That is all we have for citizen budget request. The second item on your agenda, consider approval of the L3 Harris Technologies, has been moved and will be considered at a future date. Next up is Planning and Zoning Commission with Mr. Steve Killen.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. As you know, on May 18th, City Council assigned the P&amp;Z Commission the task to review the permitted uses within the zoning code. The very next night, on May 19th, the Planning and Zone Commission did review some of the permitted uses in the zoning code and has requested the council consider these recommendations for approval to the zoning code, which would allow us to address some of the permitted uses and present challenges to the P&amp;Z and to staff when considering businesses coming to the city of Steenville. There are basically seven items in the report, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding each of those seven items.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Steve from council members?
Being none, then I would make a motion, a long one here, so we can wrap it all together. But I would make a motion that we move Tattoo Parlor Body Piercing Studios as allowed permitted use in B2 and B3 districts, keeping it in industrial. Tattoo Parlor Body Piercing Studios allowed in a permitted use of the downtown district. Bed and Breakfast, Bed and Breakfast Boarding House to be combined as one permitted use as Bed and Breakfast Boarding House in zoning districts B1, B3, and Downtown. Bicycle Sales and Rentals to allow as a permitted use in zoning districts B2, B3, and Downtown. Bakery and confectionery shops to be all bakery-related permitted use, with exception to wholesale distribution into bakery retail for zoning districts B1, B2, B3, and Downtown. And bakery wholesale distribution to be allowed as a permitted use in industrial zoning.
Second.
Okay, got a first and a second. Is there any discussion on any of those?
Under Bed and Breakfast, I just want to clarify, does that include Airbnb properties or is that a separate issue?
It would include that under this ordinance, yes, sir.
Number three, we're leaving all is exactly the same, correct? Personnel service shops.
That is correct.
I believe that's why we didn't... And they are... Left it in industrial because that's where all of our tattoo shops are permitted now, and we don't want to cause... We can address that in the comprehensive plan. We don't want to immediately make them all in the wrong zoning, but we can address that in the future in the comprehensive plan, correct?
That's correct, that's correct, yes, sir.
Well, then anything new that would go into that would still be a permitted use, right? I mean, it is... These aren't conditional uses, right? None of them, they're just permitted.
Right.
Correct.
Any questions? If there are no questions, I'll vote. All that are in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? That passes and will go into effect immediately. We will now move to public hearing, case number RP 2021-001.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Advocate Matthew Hilbig with KFW Engineering, representing EG Tahos LLC, is requesting a replat of properties located at 2798 West Washington, being parcels R22338 and R22351 of the Motley William Abstract, also parcel 76366 of City Edition Block 157, which is part of Lot 12, and parcel 22391 of City Edition Block 157, Lot 10, of the city of Steenville, E wrath County, Texas. These properties are currently zoned industrial with future land use being commercial, with the exception of one parcel being industrial. In your staff report, I have an image that shows the relationship of these four parcels. And if you look to the bottom right-hand corner on page 20 of that particular, of those four parcels, you'll see that there is one that is industrial zoning. The project is for the development of a shopping center with tenants that comply with the permitted uses in the industrial district. The Planning and Zone Commission met on May 19th and by unanimous vote, recommended the city council approve the preliminary replat. Two letters of opposition have been submitted and are included in your packets along with maps of each of the four parcels, which will be replatted into seven, which will include two parcels that will be utilized for drainage purposes. I've also included in your packet the site plan and the preliminary plat that has been submitted for consideration. And also, there should be an aerial rendering in a PowerPoint that was uploaded. I may not have done that, but there is a aerial rendering showing what the future development will look like as understood at this time. This, of course, will... May change as the development evolves over time. And with that, council, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Killen?
Steve, on the site plans, well, there's the preliminary plat shows the thoroughfare going all the way through to the... To the property line on the southwest corner, I guess that is?
Yes.
And then the next page shows the semicircle where that's the end of where they need it now. Are they building the street all the way to the property line?
Not at this time. They're proposing that this cul-de-sac stop at the parcel identified on the plat, which I believe is track three, and then at future development, when they develop lots 901 or 902, is when they would extend the street to, well, as according to the thoroughfare plan. There is a note on the plat to indicate that the street will not be developed until there's further development of those parcels.
Okay, so 901 and 902 are not drainage. Those are not the plats?
Currently, they will be used for drainage, and if they further develop, that's when the street will be extended.
Okay, so if, if the properties further to the west and the south were developed, who would be responsible for closing that gap?
Based on the agreement that's in place right now with this developer, that street will not connect until those particular lots are developed in conjunction with this project.
But that, but it would not prevent the thoroughfare coming off of Lockhart, is that correct? If, if, if lots were developed on Lockhart there to the south and the west, that developer, maybe at the time, could still tie into Lockhart, it may just not connect here, is that correct?
Not connected Wolf Nursery, you're correct, yes, sir.
But the easement will be there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Steve? If not, we will now open a public hearing, and is there anybody here to speak in favor?
Sir.
Odeon, state your name and go ahead.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is James McKnight. I am the representative for the property owner for this plat. The engineer is not here, but I think between me and Vidal and myself, I think we can handle some questions. I just wanted to lay out a couple of things. I mean, Steve covered most of it. No nineteen acres, seven lots, supposed to be mostly for restaurants, retail, that's what we're looking for. The question about the street and the drainers, those are two big issues. Huge flood, flood plain issue on this property, which we're addressing by the channelization, which those two lots, 901 and 902. And then the street, we are dedicating, as you noted, it goes all the way through. So, we're dedicating the entire right-of-way. Right now, the note is just that we are only responsible for building what we will be responsible for under the TIA. So, the TIA was submitted as part of this. That shows our responsibilities, the impact that our development is going to make, and the road development will match whatever that impact is. We're proposing this. If the TIA said that we were actually supposed to have greater impacts, that the road is supposed to go further, then we would do that. But as proposed right now, the TIA shows our impact is about to that level, about to the lot three level. And like you said, we put in the note that if 901 or 902 were developed, that we would have to continue the road. And of course, like you said, the easement is in place. So, anyway, it's a little different, but I just thought I'd be here if anybody had any questions.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else to speak in favor? Anybody to speak in opposition? As noted, there were two letters of opposition in your, in your packet. And with that, I will close the public hearing and open it up for a motion.
Mr. Protim, I would make the motion to approve case number RP 2021-001 as presented.
Now, I will second that.
All right, we've got a first with Ricky and a second with Gerald. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion passes and we'll move forward.
Yes, sir. Case RZ 2021-010, applicant Oakdale United Methodist Nonprofit, representing Oakdale Methodist Church, is representing, is requesting a rezone of property located at 2675 West Overhill Drive, being parcel R22423 of the Motley William Survey of the city of Steenville, E wrath County, Texas, from R1 single-family residential to B1 neighborhood business. Current zoning is single-family with future land use being office slash neighborhood. The applicant is requesting a rezone to B1 office and neighborhood business to allow for the future construction of a medical office strip center. The Planning and Zoning Commission convened on May 19th, 2021, and by unanimous vote of six to zero, recommended that the city council approve the rezoning request. Glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, Steve. Any questions for Steve? Hearing none, we will open a public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody to speak against? Hearing none, I will move it to the council for a motion.
I move a rezone of property located at 2675 West Overhill from R1 to B1.
I'll second that.
Brad, Gerald's second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? That motion will pass and we'll move forward.
Yes, sir. Case number PD 2021-001 is property owner Taylor Knute of Harbin Street LLC, requesting a rezone of property at 0 S Harbin Drive, which is parcel 73763 of the Southside City, Southside Edition Block 19, Lot 15, of the city of Steenville, E wrath County, Texas. He's requesting a rezone from B2 retail and commercial business to planned development. The intended project is for the construction of townhome dwellings. Mr. Knute presented his conceptual plan on May 7th, or, I'm sorry, March 17th, 2021, and from that review with the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's some changes made to the site plan and a little bit different project brought back during the review in May, May 19th. And what the Knutes are proposing to do now is to take this parcel and eventually have that replatted into two separate, actually two separate tracks, but one of those being the townhome PD with 51 individually sold lots. So, the city ordinance requires that we act on a rezoning request first, and because of that, we are asking that the... P&amp;Z did review this, and they recommended that the city council grant the rezoning request, but with the condition that a replat be submitted within 30 days to allow the project to move forward as intended. So, if you, if we refer to the map included in, in your packet, you can see that part of their project is to keep approximately 2.7 acres, I believe, on the very corner of Swan and Harbin for future use of commercial property. It's currently zoned B2. They'd like to keep that portion of this parcel as B2, while allowing the remainder of the, of the project to be for the townhome project, which would need to be rezoned to PD, hence the request that the condition be placed on the rezoning request to allow for that replat in the next 30 days. We do have a floor plan for your review. We have an architectural rendering of what the townhomes will look like as far as their front elevation. And then we also have the preliminary plat, which we are seeking approval for in regards to what this development will, of course, intended to look like. Of course, this may evolve over the next few weeks, and if so, we will come back for final plat approval once the project is wrapped up. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Steve?
Steve, on the preliminary, these are going to be individually sold. Should we not have those individual lots shown on that preliminary plat?
They are illustrated. I don't think they're finalized quite yet, but we will be working with Knutes and their engineer to get those finalized, which is why we're only requesting a preliminary plat at this time, so we can... If those dimensions change by any, any means at all, we can address those during the civil review process, plan review process.
Any other questions?
The other question I had, these PDs are always complicated, and the timeline on them are complicated. So, when, after, if we, if this is approved tonight, what is the next step? Does it go back to P&amp;Z for the development plan to be approved and then come to us again?
We have a development plan included in your packet, which is somewhat, I guess, subject to evolution as well as we move forward with the project. It's based on a lot of approvals that need to take place along the way. But to answer your question, we will have to go back to P&amp;Z for the replat, because it's not just the two parcels. It's going to be the corner parcel, which is 2.7 acres, and then the PD itself, which has 51 individual lots represented on, on the plan.
That has to go back to P&amp;Z?
Yes, sir.
So, is there, really, then there's really nothing for us to approve tonight, right, other than just send it back to P&amp;Z?
We're asking for the, I'm sorry, didn't mean to walk on you there, but we're asking for the rezone to be approved, contingent upon the replat being filed within 30 days.
And here, we're talking only of the rezone of the, of the back partial, portion of the property?
Yes, sir. The PD will be the roughly four point, some odd acres, and then the...
Then the 2.63 in the corner stays business, B2?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we have another opportunity to approve the development plan before it's finalized.
We will come back after the P&amp;Z recommendation at the next hearing. Yes, sir.
With full development plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll open a public hearing for this case, and I will invite anybody to speak in favor.
Appreciate the council's time tonight. Most of the council members, I believe, are familiar with this project. We've been at work on it for the better part of three years now. And for those of you that aren't too familiar, the entire parcel, the original intention was for it all to be commercial, the main anchor tenant being a hotel and convention center. After working on that for a couple of years, we've decided, based on past projects that we've recently completed, that there's a, there is a large need in Steenville for new, single-family housing, specifically affordable housing for your, whether it be first-time homebuyer or someone looking to simply downsize from a, you know, a large, single-family lot and a residence. So, that is why we have come up with this site plan that you have before you. As Steve said, it is going, it's going to be 50 individual units with two different floor plans. Kind of to touch on what he was just talking about, the lot sizes that are labeled on there, each lot is labeled. The dimensions are, you have the average width size of the two floor plans and one on there. It's kind of hard to see unless you zoom in. But all of that will be finalized upon approval of the zoning request. We're going to have full engineering hopefully completed in 60 days, which the 60-day mark is not on the development plan, but again, we're just seeking approval on the zoning side of this. And once that's done, we will cut Jacob and Martin loose on the final surveys, replating, all of that. So, what you see up there is more or less the final product, very little is subject to change. But we just didn't, we haven't gone forward with full engineering until we, we're looking like we're going to get approval for the 50-unit count, which is what we're shooting for. what we're shooting for.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Anybody else to speak in favor? Anybody to speak against? Hearing none, I will open it up to the council for motion.
Mr. Pro Tim, I would make the motion to approve the rezon of the property from retail and commercial business District B2 to planned development District contingent upon the replat. Is that how you need that?
Got a first, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? And that motion will move forward, and that will conclude planning and zoning. Thank you, Steve. Finance Committee Chair, Mr. Hasky is not here tonight, so Mr. King is going to give that report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim, council members. On May 18th, 2021, the Finance Committee held a discussion regarding that waiver request for $3,003.60 in landfill fees from E wrath County Habitat for Humanity. After that discussion was held, a motion was made and seconded to forward to city council a positive recommendation to grant the waiver request. And I'll answer any questions.
Any questions for Jason? Do I have a motion?
Zoom in.
Second.
Motion by Ricky? Second by Gerald. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And I will move forward. Thank you, Mr. King. Public Works Committee, Mr. Nix is not here tonight, so he asked if I would fill in to give an update. At the Public Works Committee meeting on May 18th, there was discussion about the 100th block of Graham Avenue, and there had been earlier action by the city council to turn that into brick streets. Following the discussion, the plan was to continue to keep that in brick streets and move forward. So there's no action needed tonight with that. So we will move into Development Services Committee, which is my committee, because y'all want to keep your meat dogs. And our committee met about permitted uses and action was taken at the, earlier in the meeting on those. So the, I just want to personally say thank you to Steve and the P&amp;Z committee for taking those on. I think when you got them side by side, Bruce, you can kind of see they, not a lot of sense was made with that. So again, we're going to continue to work that through a comprehensive plan to really look at that, all our permitted uses, all our zoning requirements. But I do want to say thank you for P&amp;Z for jumping on that and having good hearty discussion the other night and bringing those options to us. And that is all I have in Development Services. So I will turn it over to the nominations committee to Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim. The nominations committee met and to consider vacancies on the Planning and Zoning Commission, the board, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, and the new Main Street Advisory Board. We'll take these one at a time, starting with the Main Street Advisory Board. The committee is recommending, appointing the following people to the Main Street Advisory Board. Tyree Slappy, Lisa Pendleton, Julie Lawrence, Rita Cook, Stephanie Beach, and Jeffrey Hamilton. That was, the committee recommends that by unanimous vote, and we'd move that these people be appointed to the Main Street Advisory Board.
Motion by Gerald, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Brady. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All against? Congratulations to those people.
The next, we have, we recommending the appointment of Nick Robinson to place five on the Planning and Zoning Commission and to, and Mary Beach McGuire as alternate number one on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that also is recommended to the council by unanimous vote of the nominating committee. And I would move that those two people be added to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Kind of first and second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations to Kendall as well.
The next one is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We have one position open there, and we, the committee is recommending the appointment of Kendall Hurley to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And we make that in the form of a motion.
Got a motion, do I have a second? Second by Lee Ann. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations to Kendall.
And the last is to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. The committee is recommending the appointment of Elizabeth Johnson to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, and we'll make that in the form of a motion.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim, that ends the nominating committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. And thank you to all those volunteers stepping up to help the community. There was a lot of good applicants this time, so we need those people. We need you to be involved in your city, so that's one big way you can, so thank you. Up next, we will have the financial report from Ms. Monica.
Mayor, Pro Tim, council. This is the budget review for the period ending April 30th, 2021. Once again, our financial indicators varied a little bit, but overall, we have a, we're in a pretty good position. For our property tax, we received $26,000 in April, which resulted in $238,000 or 3.82% increases, increased over the funds collected through last April. We're about 97.41% collected of our 6.47 million budget, which is slightly less than the 98.04% that I had anticipated, but it's still good. For our sales tax, we received $441,000 in sales tax in April. This resulted in $584,000 or 15.58% more than the funds collected through last April. The 4.3 million collected fiscal year-to-date is 69.46% of the 6.24 million budget, which is significantly higher than the 57.54% that I anticipated. For the target budget for our operating revenues were 18.8 million. We received 19.2 million in revenue fiscal year-to-date, which is 409,000 over our target budget, which is due to our sales taxes and our service charges. The target budget for operating expenditures is 12.1 million. We've expended 11.7 million fiscal year-to-date, which is 423,000 under our target budget. Our operating revenues received last year was 18 and a half million, as compared to the current year's 19.2 million, which is 776,000 increase, which is due to property taxes, sales taxes, and our service charges. The operating expenditures last year were 10.9 million. The current years were 11.7 million, which is 835,000 increase, and this is due to costs associated with the COVID-19 prevention stimulants grants to reduce the impact of COVID-19, damage claims, wages, advertising, and our gateway planning. Questions?
Any questions for Monica?
One real quick one, sorry, Monica.
That's fake.
Yeah. Just kidding. Have we received any reimbursement on the, from the, our COVID expenditures?
I don't think we've actually received the money yet. I know we've turned in some things, but I don't think we've actually received any money yet. Now, aside from the CARES funding, that we've already received the full 1.2 million on that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thurman. We're, excuse me, we're projected to receive the first tranche of the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan. We are expecting to receive that any day. I think the state has until like the 11th to get it out to us.
Have they issued all the final requirements on that?
No, sir. We received some more today from Treasury. I forwarded those to Monica to make sure we were in compliance. About the biggest one is that you have to have Dunn's number, and we do, of course.
Perfect. Stevieville Economic Development Authority report has been removed from the agenda tonight. So next, I have the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Will be approved, consent, yes, sir.
Second. Brady, we got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, comments by the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tim, members of the council, we have two upcoming council meetings. We have committee meetings on June 15th. At this point, I don't know which committees are going to be meeting that day. Our next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, July 6th. Want to remind everybody that Moolah Fest begins Thursday night. We have a concert in the park. The headliner is asleep at the wheel. We have entertainment all weekend long. I think a good time will be had by all. Also want to remind everybody that since July 4th is a Sunday this year, all of our July 4th activities will be on July 3rd. And as per city policy, our offices will be closed in celebration of July 4th on Monday, July 5th. And that concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Comments by council? We'll start with Lee Ann and work this way. Darren? Brady?
Nothing today.
Ricky?
Happy birthday to Mayor Sime.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, happy birthday to him.
Gerald?
Nothing else?
I just want to say it's good to see fresh faces in here. As I've told them earlier, it's always good to be involved in your, in your city government, in your county government. It's where you can make the biggest impact. So thank you to y'all for coming, and we look forward to seeing you again. Thank you to the people that signed up to work on the zones and the commissions, so you can make a big impact there. So again, appreciate all the hard work there. Happy birthday, Mr. Sime. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.